I've been gone for work a few times, but I know it's
I'm getting home. We're supposed to be in the game tomorrow. I've had COVID. I've had both shops. I'm ready to go.
I'm gonna get time to go on vacation.
I was gonna say, whoa. I don't know who is sitting there.
How are you, Barb?
Give me a quick training.
Oh. You have one happen.
He has to make one. I'm so sorry.
Oh, that's all I need.
Okay, I will call this ready meeting. It's the 4th Monday, April 12, 2021 at 6 o'clock PM. Can we get a roll call, please?
Brian Hanson.
Here.
Jason Sampson.
Here.
Dane Nielsen.
Here.
Sandy Eric.
Here.
Luke Spence.
Here.
Barb Mittman.
Here.
First item is approval of the agenda.
Move to approve.
Barb and Dane, any discussion? Seeing none, council, please vote. That is approved, takes us into the consent agenda. Any item may be removed for separate consideration.
Move to approve.
Okay, yes, Brian and Sandy. Any discussion? Seeing none, council, please vote. That is approved, takes us into the public forum, which is time set aside for comments from the public on topics of city business other than those listed on the agenda. No action may be taken. Looks like, is there anyone here to speak in the public forum? If you're not going to speak, Karen. Okay, then we'll go ahead and close the public forum and move into old business. There's old business A, approved pay request number 10 for the Central Business District project from construct in the amount of $161,148.50.
Move to approve.
Second.
Jason, Luke, discussion. Okay, seeing none, council, please vote. That is approved, takes us to old business B, discussion appropriate follow-up regarding emergency measures during COVID-19 pandemic, capacity of city facilities, and previous resolution number 47C, 2020-2021. Anything anyone would like to discuss on that?
I think after our last meeting would be um, Gates Hall of A. Looking at the trends of COVID, Sori County and around it's remained pretty stable as.
We're having trouble hearing you, so I was trying to turn it up, but it's not letting us, so.
But what I'm saying was, with cases being where they're at and meeting where they're at. And as I said last week, I think early last week, it's been almost a week now, but almost half of the adults in the state of Iowa have been at least all over a quarter or see their stack. I think I would support continuing in the direction we've been heading with at least all the different stuff. I would would support those going back to on. How about Gates Hall of Social Distancing?
Is that the pavilion?
End of the pavilion, yeah, sorry. Basically, any city facilities. That was motion.
Second.
Okay, so you have a motion, a second, discussion.
I guess I'd be curious, are we having requests for such? You know, are we having issues where people want more than, more open than we have?
We have had several requests in that regard. But in an effort to still try and keep people fairly spaced out and things like that, you know, it still keeps our capacity not probably quite at 100%. So, you know, we had an event at Gates Hall this weekend, and it was a quilt show. And, you know, just based on the setup with the, they were spread out, you know, amongst their tables. And we had zero issues with people, you know, not wearing masks. We had asked them to all wear masks, and so it worked out really well. So I think if we can continue to stress that we're going to try and keep people, you know, spread out as best we can, and if they wear masks, you know, I think we can function fine.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Other discussion?
Dane, can you go over what your motion is again?
Would be asking restriction also requiring masks and social distance, which is what we have to be as well.
So that would be in addition to this? Because I don't see anything about our own facilities. Is that, is that seven, is it in the list of seven somewhere?
Don't know if that was said in a resolution or if that's the additional document that we had that was the guideline that set the 8%. I think we talked about capacity when you approved that. So I don't know that it was actually part of the resolution.
I think it was originally part of the emergency powers that we gave to you and Jordan.
And then what we did was we compiled the plan that had the 8%, and here's what we're going to do when.
Okay.
And there was capacity in there of city facilities. But all of that was triggered by the 8%, which we are under. But since it wasn't urgent, we didn't want to lift that without council approval then.
I think it's, I think it's something that, because you've taken previous action on, you should go ahead and take action on it this evening, and we can add it to language that we already have.
Are we looking at amending this resolution that we've been working off of or scrapping it and starting a new one? Or which would be easiest?
Well, I think, long run, I think we can probably scrap what we have, because I think a lot of this is not applicable anymore. Right, so. Looking forward to cancel things. Yeah. Say that again. I was looking for something to draw lines through and. Yeah, I mean, I think. That particular motion doesn't fit. Yeah, I mean, this was something that was put in place a year ago, right? Yeah. Over a year ago, probably, so. So I think just by motion, you can, you can make the motion, well, the motion's been made to lift the restrictions.
Amend your motion, Dane. Lift the restrictions. Pretty good enough, isn't it? If he just, the motion is just to lift the COVID restrictions? Is that what you were saying?
Well, you, well, I think we have a couple of things. We have the capacity thing, which can be done by motion. Otherwise, I mean, if you want to repeal this whole resolution, that's something that can be done, but there might be pieces that are still applicable, so it's probably more appropriate to review it for a total update for the next meeting.
Yeah, I think the motion that's on the table works for tonight. And then.
Review the other.
We can, yeah, we can go through it and see if there are things in here we need to keep.
Okay.
Then we can, we can go from there and revising the resolution.
Any other discussion on the particular motion regarding facility capacities? Okay, not seeing any, so we'll go ahead and vote on the motion. Okay, then that is approved. Are there other topics regarding the resolution or COVID that we need to discuss this evening?
This isn't really going to be a motion. Library Board's autonomy and they're really. Got a couple of neighbors who are not real happy with that 5%.
Can you speak up, Dane? I'm struggling, and Marla says she's having trouble hearing on Facebook too, so is your mic on?
I can barely hear you guys over here.
All right. Is that better?
Yes.
Okay. I, what I was saying, I, I'm not necessarily going to sit here and make a motion. I understand the library board has the autonomy to make this decision. I just want to voice a little frustration with them on behalf of a couple of neighbors I talked to. That there's kind of a mixed signal, because we talked about 8% being our moderate outbreak. We're talking about getting the pool ready to open up. We're lifting capacity limits. And then the library board at 5% decides that they're going to go to appointment only. And while I understand that means you can still make an appointment, it sends a mixed signal when we kind of define 8% as our threshold for when we start restricting things further. And yet, when we've been sitting steady for the better part of two months as restrictions have lifted, the library makes that decision. So again, I'm not going to sit here and make a motion. That's just a frustration I had had brought to my attention, so for whatever that's worth. And I agree, I've had people come to me too and just beside themselves that they can't go into the library when you can go anywhere, go to score this weekend, and it's elbow to elbow, you know, with soccer kids and adults. And we can go in everywhere, and, but yet, we can't go check out a book or use the library without an appointment. I get it, but I don't know. I agree with Dane's position there that, because I've had people ask me about it too, so. I think my biggest contention is just the lack of consistency. I mean, a lot of our other staff have been working basically more or less their typical roles, and that doesn't seem to be the case in the library. And like I said, I totally respect their autonomy and their ability to make those decisions, but it's just, like I said, something that's been brought to me, and I've chewed on a little bit.
Other comments from council on that topic? And then I do see the demand is online, so out of respect for her and the library, if she would like to address that, you're welcome to, Amanda. It looks like her hand is raised too, so I think she's indicating she would like to speak.
Yeah, so I was just going to say I'm here if there's things that I can address, in particular regarding employee work. We're all working our full schedules. We're all doing all of the same work we would be doing at any other point, so if there's concerns there, I can address those further here or in another capacity if needed. Also regarding the percentages, 8% is also a metric that the board had set. Above that is curbside only, not even access to the library by appointment. And so we were using that same metric. The board did set that same metric, but the 5% just for staff comfort levels for safety purposes was the other metric that was set as far as between 5 and 8% browsing is available by appointment, and then below 5%. We are open to come in without appointment. We were there for a few weeks. The numbers did go up, and we had to revert back to our phase two, and we were very clear about that. The entire time, we've been very clear on what our metrics are and where we will be based on the percentages. So most people, at least that I've talked to, have been very understanding about that. We have a lot of people, even when we've been open, who still prefer the curbside method. They're still not comfortable going out places more than they need to. So we're doing everything that we can. We're getting things for people in the community. We're offering the same services we do all of the time. It just looks a little bit different. But as always, if there's anything that people need that we're not offering, we would definitely like to know that so that we can address those concerns.
Council, anything else for Amanda? Okay, thank you, Amanda. Other discussion on COVID? And it looks like there was consensus about taking a deep dive of the resolution for next time. Okay, then we will take that as direction and move on to new business. There's new business A, resolution number 91, 2020-2021, resolution authorizing approving a loan and disbursement agreement and providing for the issuance and securing the payment of $10 million taxable sewer revenue bond series 2021A.
Move to approve.
Second.
Luke and was that Sandy? Okay. Any discussion? Plastic down, so I know who's talking again. If seeing none, council, please vote. Okay, that's approved, takes us to item B, resolution number 92, a resolution setting date for public hearing on urban renewal plan amendment.
Move to approve.
Second.
And Luke, discussion on that? Seeing none, council, please vote. That is approved, takes us to item C, resolution number 93, 2020-2021, resolution to set public hearing on proposed disposal by sale of real property, Gates Hall.
Move to approve.
Second.
Barb and Luke, discussion on that? Now, obviously, there is public interest there, so Marla will make sure to promote the public hearing so folks know the various avenues, that they're able to provide comment for that. And then, as you saw, she was also digging in a lot of pretty interesting, fascinating history today too on that. So I think she'll continue to do that, so everybody has some good history to work from too, as that discussion comes forward at the next meeting. Any discussion there? And seeing none, council, please vote.
Push mall again.
I don't have lights. Mine doesn't want to turn off. I say yes. Or don't have a light at all. I don't have a light.
Okay.
Hi.
That hearing's at 26 at 6:00 PM, for those that are interested, correct?
Next meeting.
And I'll be here or online.
Or Zoom if they, and so that'd be in the directions, Marla will give on how they are able to notify Karen that they wish to speak on the Zoom portion if they would like to do it that way. And then they can also provide written comment, and that will be in there too. Okay, then with that, we will move on to resolution number 94, 2020-2021, resolution approving the use of the officer training reimbursement agreement for the police department. I believe Rick is here to give you some background.
This contract we've had, oh, at least as long as I've been here. But over the years, when it's ever been tweaked to adjust for any kind of changes that we do, I've never had our attorney look at that. And so I sent it to Erin to have her review it along with our conditional offer and our, our employment offer, just to make sure that everything is aligned and everything makes sense. And we've never done that before, at least I've never done that before. And, you know, with some adjustments, some language changes, worked out really well, so there wasn't a whole lot to be done, but we just want to make sure they're all on the same page in case we ever get challenged on that. So this is on Erin's advice, we're having the council look at this and review it and agree with it so we can make offers in the future.
So just a point of clarification, this is the standard form that Rick would then use going forward. And then for each individual officer that's hired, do you imagine putting that on the consent agenda or regular agenda for approval?
On the contract itself?
Yeah.
I've not done that. We, that gets signed, and then we, at some point when we hire somebody.
Yeah. So I would recommend that we put those then individually on the consent agenda for approval once we've got the actual officer's name. So this is just a kind of a preliminary form of the contract approval.
Okay, fortunately, we've never been challenged on them, so. If you have any questions, feel free to ask.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Luke and Brian, discussion? And seeing none, council, please vote. And that is approved, takes us to item E, resolution number 95, 2020-2021, resolution approving the memorandum of understanding with the public professional and maintenance employees local, 2003, I U A, I U P A T, sign-on bonus for certified officers.
You want me to talk now?
Yep.
Okay, well, you guys may not know this, but we have just started our third cycle for trying to hire officers. We have still one in the pipeline, and I'm waiting for a report. Once I get that report, we'll make a conditional, we'll make, we'll make an offer of employment. So if that takes place, then we still have three officers we have to fill. And I've done everything I can think of to try to hire staff. And, you know, I'm competing with all the other agencies in the state for the same, for the same people. And we're trying to think of ideas that we can do to entice people to come here, and this was one of them. You know, it's a $5,000 bonus that we'll give to certified officers that come start working for us. And I realize that they work one year, the next paycheck, they get that $5,000. They could leave after that. I mean, that's, that's a possibility. We've never had anybody, you know, leave like that. But right now, I need bodies. And unless I compromise my standards, which I'm not going to do, I got to do something that's going to attract people to work for our agency. And hopefully, once we get them here, we can keep them here longer than just a year. I'll be glad to answer any questions you have.
So a certified officer's already been to academy, right?
Already been to, so we don't have to send them there or anything.
Right.
So our reasoning behind this is that it's a shorter training time. You know, they should be familiar with the code, how to handle calls out on the street. And so instead of 12 to 14 weeks, we're looking at maybe five to seven weeks, depending on their experience and knowledge.
Plus the price of going to academy.
Yes, yes, and that's the downside. I've, I've said this numerous times before. When an officer leaves, it's not the cost that bothers me, although, I mean, I don't like that idea, but it's the time that it takes us to hire somebody else. And that's, that's the hard part, you know? So the guy that leaves today, it's a year before we have him replaced. And if I can do that in a shorter period, we can do that. A lot of agencies offer a $10,000 bonus, but they divide that over four years. So on your anniversary day, you get $2,500.
That's why I was wondering if we couldn't scaffold that a bit longer and buy more time instead of the 5,000. I didn't know that you could do that, that you could ladder it or scaffold it.
Yeah, that, my former agency did that. And you don't get a lot of people, because that's not a really big incentive. It's $2,500, you know? So by doing 5,000 one time, right up front, that's a little more enticing than having something. Because you're, if you're with an agency more than two or three years, and you decide to leave, so you give up $2,500 or even $5,000, depending on where you go and what you're going to make. So I think this will catch people's eye, but whether they come here or not, I don't know. Anything else? Any other questions?
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Okay, Luke and Sandy, further discussion? Okay, seeing none, council, please vote. That is approved, takes us to, thanks, Rick, takes us to resolution number 96, 2020-2021, resolution approving the master agreement for municipal engineering services with H R Green.
Move to approve.
Second.
Brian and Barb, discussion? Council, please vote. That is approved, takes us to resolution number 97, 2020-2021, resolution approving the access and lease agreement with next link.
Move to approve.
We have a motion from Dane, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Brian, second. Almost left Dane hanging there with no.
I see that controversy.
Back of a second.
Everybody's tired, okay, discussion.
This is for putting an antenna on the water tower?
Correct.
And nothing else?
Both water towers, it's 300 per water tower, so that'd be 600 per month, 7,200 a year.
But nowhere else?
Just on, just on the water tower. So if they want to put it somewhere else, I need to create another agreement.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, council, please vote. Takes us to reports, starting with city administrator.
Other than my report, I don't have anything. Unless you guys have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer.
You gave us the list of different qualifications that we could choose from.
Yep.
Is that, do you have a deadline on when that's? Evaluation.
Well, my evaluation will be coming up here pretty soon. I've, believe it or not, I've already been here almost a year. It's crazy. So I'd, I would like to have those competencies before. That way, we can set that up, and I'm graded on those that you want, want me to be graded on. I've received Barb's and Luke's. I'm just, whenever you guys have the opportunity to search through.
What? You got my reply. I want all of them.
Oh, yeah, you wanted all of them, that's right, that's right. That's why. Put all of them on there, all 28. Hey, you guys are doing the evaluations, so i, if you want all 28, I'm okay with that. We'll just be there for a long time. It'll be a very long council meeting.
All right.
But, yeah, so not really a deadline, just like them, so we have enough time to prepare and get them ready for the evaluation.
And was it part of the consultant process for them to propose the tools? Or do we need to get a group together to talk about the matrix? As I know, that was something that. Or do we need to get a group together to talk about the matrix? As I know, that was something that is.
We're, uh, that was something that they proposed, and that's something that we already kind of have. We're just working through the kinks and the details right now.
Okay, so probably when that's about done, we might want to grab a couple council members to take a look at the, whatever they come up with. Anything else for Jordan?
Jordan, do you have a timeline on the filling of the planning and zoning position?
No, so we have to post it internally for fourteen days. And then after that, that's when we can, we can do that. So we'll plan on posting it internally this week. And then we'll wait for the fourteen days, see if we have any internal candidates. And then we'll start posting outside of our organization. Hopefully, we'll get someone in the first round and, but it will be, it will be hard to replace his expertise and knowledge. So, but I think we'll be able to find someone.
Have we ever found anything out about? Colo Telecom or whatever and their franchise agreement? Knowing that they're operating in our city limits, but.
So I've been told.
Franchise agreement like everyone else.
So I've reached out to several people and as of right now, I have not had any, they have not told me that they are operating within the city limits. There's been one person that said that they have cable, cable from them, but I don't think that they're in city limits.
I think Midwest Insurance uses.
I, I can conclusively tell you when I lived on South G, I had them. And I know Anytime Fitness has them and.
And I'm pretty sure Hertz Farm Management uses them, too.
Cause my first entry, but don't quote me on that.
Dane, did you just have internet or did you have cable, too?
I just had internet.
I think the agreement is for cable. So it's if they offer cable TV within the city limits.
They asked if I wanted it.
Okay.
So you're saying that these places do have cable.
Well, I don't know if they have cable. I know they're using their internet service, so I didn't know.
I know they go along the north side of South G for sure.
Yeah, we need the cable side of things.
They offered it to me. I just want to make sure it's fair for everybody, you know, and they're not, yeah.
Yeah. And, and I did give a guy a call back. He called me several months ago and I called him back and I haven't gotten the response back from him. But I'll reach back out to him and, and check with him.
I'm gonna ask you for like three meetings now, keep forgetting. But you said something about someone else in your report, so let me think of it.
Okay, yeah, I have it written down, so I'll, I'll get in contact with them.
Anything else for Jordan? Okay, and moving on from my report, one of the items kind of going along with internet was Metronet. I know it's been a lot of questions about what's going on and that we got, had been getting fairly short responses from. Metronet, it said they were writing on Alliant for the polls. And then so we got on a call with Alliant to talk through what the holdup is. And they're having issues with their current poll capacity. And so they're negotiating with Metronet about how to get more capacity on the polls and who's going to pay for it. So there's a holdup with some of that on the above-ground infrastructure, so. I don't know how long it's going to take, but frustrating, disappointing, but especially if you were told it was going to be done last fall. And half the town has probably signed up for it, the service. So, yeah, I, Jordan was on that, too. I thought it was helpful to hear directly from Alliant what, what was going on and kind of why. The spacing of the wires and all that, because that helped me wrap my brain around why they were denying the poll usage. Also, a couple of the things, I'll let Jason talk about Lincoln Highway Days. The twenty forty visioning, it sounds like, I think we probably have a fairly tentative date for, was it May fifteenth? I think it was Saturday to do a public meeting about that to gather input. So you guys can pencil that in. We'll. Was that May eighth? Okay, sorry. Yep, there we go. So that'd be May eighth. Yes, you're right. It was the Saturday before Mother's Day, so May eighth. So I misspoke. So you can pencil in May eighth. We'll get the official info out, but wanted to get that on your radars so you can attend. We, it was the focus groups who are struggling to find a date that works for you and I to come down that works on our end, too, as well. Because we were hoping to do those on the Friday before, but they aren't available. I know some of you will probably be asked to be on a couple of those. I think Barb, in particular, I, we had targeted to be on one because of her role at Food at First and Y S S in the past with the underserved population. So, yeah, stand, look out for that. We'll get, we'll get info out. And then we'll also probably need help recruiting folks for those various focus groups to make sure we get the right voices on those. And I know I spelled out in previous meetings kind of what those were going to be. So we'll let you know what types of groups there are and how many folks we're looking for. So you can help get us names to make sure we have a good diverse group of people in those. So it was really to find those subvoices that might get overshadowed by the larger survey that was answered. So the foundation that, with the Fieldhouse Discussion and Fundraising Capital Campaign's been going really well privately. And the first week of June, we would like to kick off the big public campaign. So you, you can watch that as well. The plan is to have folks set up at, out at the pavilion at score to do appointments, to talk to folks about it in a more COVID-friendly manner. We're probably looking for some youth, maybe to help blanket the town with some door hangers to let folks know they can make the appointment. So might need some help recruiting some young folks to do some of that, too. But that's the plan to get the word out. And then there, I think Rotary then was going to do kind of a capstone fundraiser on June nineteenth to kind of end the public campaign phase. So we'll have a couple of weeks there to full-court press, try to get the remainder of the money that we need. And the catalyst, or not catalyst, cat grant, there will be, that window's not opened. It'll probably open when the legislature adjourns, but we're preparing to apply for the grant. IRS is moving along, going well, so pieces are falling into place. They're planning to work with Story County Community Foundation as well to kind of manage the funds and all that piece on the backend. Otherwise, the last piece, Marla's got contacted today by Channel Five. They want to do a story tomorrow about our downtown project. So I'll be talking to them sometime tomorrow morning. So maybe tomorrow, sometime they'll run a story on us. Anything for me?
Is it, is the committee scheduled, the twenty forty committee scheduled to meet at any point? Or are we going to have a chance to see what that survey says before the public meeting?
Yeah. Jordan, do you know if the folk, if they have an intention for the full committee to come back together? Because they've had the, the subcommittee about public input, so I don't know if they're going to bring the full committee back once the input is complete.
I think it's just the focus groups and then after the, after everything is completed and bring everything back together at the end, everybody will come back.
Okay.
So after the, the sessions from June fifth through the eighteenth, that is all.
Would you be able to email the full group just the survey results? I think that Barb, in particular, would be interested in seeing that.
Well, yeah, especially if I'm going to try to.
Yeah.
Represent.
So probably both the full committee and, I mean, if council wants to look at the original written survey, you're welcome to, obviously.
I think the last time John was here, he said they were going to try to reach out to some of the undersurveyed demographics. Has that been done?
Yeah, that's those focus groups. So there will be various groups. There's youth, there's folks new to the community, there's folks that work here but don't live here. There's folks that use community services and underserved. There's also one for minority populations to have that diversity and voice. And then seniors, I think it was, yeah, there were six of them of those voices that had either lower response rates that we knew for sure, or that if they did respond, would have been totally overshadowed just by sheer numbers. So those are the six. We'll be looking for both folks that provide those community services like Food at First. And then we'll need them to help identify people who are users of the services who would be good voices to have and that, too.
Are we going to publish the survey results publicly?
I think when everything's done, that it'll be in the report.
Yeah.
I'd like to see them sooner than later, too, if possible.
And then everyone will have, so there's the, the focus groups. But then the purpose of the public event is then for all the voices to have another opportunity to provide input as well. So we'll need everybody's help here, making sure folks turn out for that. And it would be the, and so basically it'll be a big fanfare for the first in-person community coffee again. So it's the second Saturday, we'll have coffee there. We wanted to have it at gatherings, but they have a wedding, so we won't have it at gatherings.
Where is it at?
Where did we settle on? Okay.
So is it ten o'clock or nine o'clock? What time?
It was.
Nine o'clock?
Yeah. So we'll get the official stuff out so everyone can, can see that. Especially because my brain can only mostly think about COVID shots right now, so that's my, my last topic. We will be having a lot of them coming to New Cara and Story County. It's either shipped or we'll be here soon. So we'll be doing some public clinics throughout the county. So if you know folks that are still interested, make sure they watch our social media. They can also sign up on the website. We're going to send an email blast when the calendar appointments are ready, which should be about any time. They're working on them today. So we'll be in, next Tuesday, we'll be in Story City. Their Wednesday will be in Zearing and then Thursday will be in Nevada. So there'll be appointments available. So hopefully that'll help get another batch done in town. And then the big boost day is Saturday. So we'll be getting everybody's second dose from that first clinic we did. And again, I want to thank, because I haven't done that here, want to thank the fire department and the police department, public safety. And then obviously Tim's staff at Park and Rec to make gates available. It was pretty incredible to, to go through 1,200 vaccinations that day. Story Medical is an incredible partner and just for me, when I left, just reflecting on all the help it took to pull that off. Like, I'm not an emotional person, but I was getting emotional at the end of the day, thinking about everyone it took to do that. And we had folks coming from all over the state, coming to Nevada that day. And, I mean, we had Main Street folks there promoting downtown. They sold out of donuts because so many people were going downtown after getting their, their vaccine. So at first I was a little bit annoyed that a lot of folks from out of town gobbled it up because a Twitter account got ahold of it and the appointments filled, but it was a good showcase for the community. We got 1,200 more islands vaccinated. So it was a really great day. We had tons of help and went well. We learned a lot, so. Yeah, big success. And I know folks at Public Health were watching what we were doing because they thought we were crazy. Hey, that was a long-winded report, so any questions? Okay, council reports.
We had our Lincoln Highway Days Committee today. Brett and Jordan were there also. Everything's moving pretty smooth as far as setting everything up. We're getting everything in line, getting ready to go. And seems like we're going to have a lot more ideas coming in this year than we've had in the past. Should be a little bit more spread out. Lot more activities to do for everybody. And we're trying to include all age groups in this, this coming up year. Because I know some age groups haven't really been targeted as much as we have in the past, so. And we're looking to maybe add some things on other days other than the Saturday, too. So that'll be helpful in stretching out the event for that weekend.
If you know anybody who's part of an organization or group that would like to add an event to Lincoln Highway Days, they're always looking for new events to be added. So make sure you can talk to myself or Jordan or Jason or Henry or whoever, and we can get you connected. So there are some new groups that have wanted to add some new events, so it's the best way to grow the event.
So is it the twenty-eighth? Is it the last?
Hey, other reports?
So Runners United Nevada, I know I've talked about a lot of these things before, but they're getting closer now. The Nevada Nice Virtual 5K, we did close registration after last week, so that's underway. People are running their 5Ks and reporting their times. But the Donut Dash, which is on April twenty-fourth, Paula Feltonner deserves all the credit in the world for the work that she's put into that. As everyone here would expect, she has gone above and beyond to make this awesome. We've already got over sixty people registered and it's still a little under two weeks away. So that's going to be a really cool event for our downtown, I think. And she's really put a lot of work into that. She's doing, I think, free donuts for a year for the craziest donut costume. So that should be pretty fun. And it's only an untimed one-mile run, so like, it's, it's a family thing, you know, as much as it is for, for serious runners. We also got our chip timing stuff coming in now. So for our series that starts on May twenty-second, we'll have chip timing for all of our races, which just further improves the image of, of the organization and our community as a whole for any out-of-town runners who come here. And then obviously, again, May twenty-second, the concert event with Brian White and Wade Hayes, that's coming together nicely. I know the J C's are doing a lot of work, getting their beer garden organized for that, and they're working with Rick and Ray on that. So should be a really good event. We've got some food vendors lined up. And, yeah, it's going to be a fun day with the, with the race and the concert. So we're really excited. And I do also want to give a shout out to Brett. He's given the update on these, on these vaccines. And, you know, he's not going to sit there and take credit, but find me a mayor in the state of Iowa who has done more to get more shots and arms in his community, and I'll wait. So thank you, Mayor, because that helps us plan these events with confidence, so.
Other reports?
Oh, just to respond to a question, yes, there will be a parade, Lincoln Highway Days Parade.
Whenever. Top hats and tailpipe, wait. It's a new theme.
March twenty-seventh, we had, my daughter got married on gatherings, and I just want to shout out to Main Street. We have an awesome Main Street. Larry let us redo the marquee. You know, she grew up going to movies and she goes, Dad, I really want a picture in front of the marquee at the Camelot. It's always been the Camelot. So Larry, as gracious as he is and does for the community, said, sure, change the marquee, do whatever you want. PD let me mark huffs. You know, they helped me with some traffic control, the street helped with things. The, I was worried about the construction in the alley and the construction crews took care of everything so people could get in and out the back, the front. Just everybody on Main Street was just all in for an event that we'd been planning forever and ever. And I just want to shout out to all those people that, you know, that's just our Main Street right now. They just, we just couldn't do it any better. So kudos to everybody and thanks for the help, so.
Congratulations.
There.
Other reports? And then we'll go to staff reports, and I don't want to forget online. So we'll go to Amanda first.
Um, I don't think there's really anything else besides what's in my report, so if there's any questions about that, please let me know.
Amanda? Thanks, Amanda. So we'll have Jeremy come up to the mic and talk about public work.
Good evening. I don't have too much. I just want to say that our street guy started last Monday, Nate Hall, he hit the ground running. He's going to be a real good fit. Our new wastewater supervisor is going to start next Monday. I think he's, he's going to fit in, too. I think he's a good asset. And Friday is Dennis Mensing's last day after, after thirty years with us. He's, he's going to hang it up. So we're having cookies and coffee at the street shed. You guys got an email about it. But other than that, we're just business as usual. We kind of ran into a hiccup with signing. The tragedy at the prison has stopped. We buy all our signs from the prison. And so they, they, they stopped the, you know, selling of signs or kind of reorganizing what's going on. And so I reached out to DOT and they can't get us any signs because that, they get their blanks from them. And reached out to Iowa State and they couldn't help us. So we're looking at other vendors. I think I found one. So the truck route, the rough crossing, just, just the signs that we need. So hopefully we'll get them. Any questions?
He's starting to look for a new guy right away to replace Dennis?
Yes. Again, we got to post it for internally for fourteen days and then. Yeah. Yeah, a lot of knowledge there. You know, he's been here, his dad was here. That's all I have.
Thanks, Jeremy. Let Ray come up and hear from Fire and MS.
Thanks for.
Thanks for letting us help out with the vaccines. We have some staff that'll be helping out on Saturday as well, so there's a lot of shots, so.
I was feeling it for a couple of days, too.
You know, and we got a lot of compliments from people from out of town that it was very well-run and organized. And it was a great partnership with everybody and it was really an honor to be a part of it and help give shots and stuff, but well done. So we're looking forward to it this Saturday. I have an update on the gas stations. So we were reaching out to the owner because somebody had kind of set up a camper on one of the vacant lots. And we knew that that was going to be contagious if we didn't get a hold of it. So we talked to the owner, got those folks moved along and then said, oh, by the way, where are you at? Because we're getting a lot of calls from the public about vacant gas stations. They, he told me he wasn't going to open without the ability to sell gas. No gas station ever would. We reached out to the DNR and the DNR has confirmed that they've had multiple conversations with them over multiple gas stations throughout the state. The previous owners kind of left it in a real legal battle, and so they've been kind of fighting all the way to get these things open. The DNR is not going to release the red tag lock on the gas pumps until they are tested, inspected and insured through the process of an underground storage tank. So the person that owns them is in contact with the insuring agency. A number of his gas stations have been inspected and the tanks tested. I mean, kudos to the DNR to think of our community's safety and and there is a bit of a delay there. But they're very firm on not opening that station until they know the tanks are safe for our community. So I guess that's what we would want from our our DNR to make sure that we're safe. So I think it's in process. I'd like to think that everything seems to be above board. I know it's been, we've all been kind of questioning it at our level, too. Is it some scam or something like that? But the answers we keep hearing are still consistent with what we believe is a gas station that will open. So I, that's all I got for you on that, so. But it was nice that somebody from the state government actually knew the person and was in the process of giving them guidance, so that was helpful. Yesterday, we did the memorial for Sergeant Jim Smith on the Interstate Bridge. That was, that was a pretty neat thing. I got a phone call about 8:00 PM on Saturday that says, can you have every fire department in the county lined up by 1:00? And so we reached out to our partners at Emergency Management. The sheriff's office was really good in coordinating all of it. And we were able to get every fire department up to speed and on bridges and, you know, when they went through. So that was, that was kind of a neat tribute. And then April 23rd is the High School Day of Service. I might have mentioned this already, but we will start the process of painting our hydrants. We have a request to paint the top of the hydrant instead of the caps because apparently when we paint the caps, the that cable doesn't swing as well and gets kind of frozen up. So we're going to paint the entire hydrant red and then the top cap of the hydrant will have the hydrant color. It's kind of a negotiation I'm having with Chief Malvin, but I'm willing to concede that it's probably a better thing because I think it will weather a lot better, too. So but it's hard to change things when you're used to it, but I concede to his knowledge and wisdom. So that's all I have.
Council, anything for Ray? Tim, come up and talk about Park and Rec.
The only thing I'd share with you tonight is we're in the process of getting the last of the water turned on in all the parks and the restrooms. I think half of Harrington is done, then should be done here in the next couple of days with the rest of it. Cemetery is not on yet. Hopefully we'll get that done in the next couple of weeks. Got a repair that we need to do out there, so we'll do that. And otherwise, activities have really ramped up with the month of April and warm weather. So if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
For Tim?
Very good. Thank you.
Ms. Rick? Probably go something like, you have my report.
You have my report. Any of you have any questions about it, just ask, but one of the things I did want to say is I want to thank Marla for all the work that she's been doing and helping us promote our police department and our city. One of the things that we talked about early on was how do we get people to come to Nevada? I mean, we can offer them benefits and money and all that kind of stuff, but why Nevada? And recently I saw a pitch for the chief's position in in West Liberty. And they had this flyer that talked about West Liberty and went into a lot of detail about what they have to offer. Time I got done reading it, I'm thinking, it's not a bad town to live in. That's pretty sharp. Can we do something like this? So I gave it to Marla and to Josh and Chris to work on, and they came up with a really, really nice flyer. And I know Marla did a ton of work on it, so I want to publicly acknowledge that, so. Unless you've got any questions, that's all I got for you.
First of all, West Liberty is awesome.
I've never been there, so I'll take your word for it. They have a very diverse community.
They do. It's a, is a great community. It's second to Nevada. Yeah, I love the Easter egg thing. That was awesome. I got a lot of comments from people that really liked that. And that's a credit to the police and Marla, obviously, but that went over really well to people.
And we're always looking for other ideas out there.
You know, the officers, it was appreciated because I know she probably did twist some arms to get them to go out and take goofy pictures of the bunnies, but.
Yes, she did. I kind of helped, too, so that worked out.
You can tell the officers that it was appreciated and people noticed that it was many of them doing that.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Anything else?
Enter profiles, too. I know we have some that we did for the city administrator openings, too, so you might be able to steal some things out of those pieces.
Okay, well, I'm sure Marla's got all that, but I'll say something to her.
Thanks, Rick. Larry?
Thank you. First, let me just tell you, thank you for extending our contract. It's as near as I can remember. It's now 19 years ago that we started working here. And it's been a long and very successful run that we've had, so thank you for that. Second, I just want to give a public thank you out to Sean for all the years of service he's had with the city. And it's been a pleasure for us to have worked with him all these years. And I, when I talked to him previously, I, I thanked him for making our job so much easier. And we've completed so many projects without very, very few issues. So to that, we owe Sean a great bit of gratitude. With that, talking about projects, the downtown project, obviously, was making headway on the alley west of Sixth Street between J and K. I believe all the infrastructure is in there and the rock is in place in that alley and they're continuing work on the west end of K Avenue. In addition to that, South Glen, Sean told me last week, I believe they've started grading and putting in subbase rock. And so we should see some paving out there very shortly, so we're making progress there. On the back to the downtown project, we have had a couple of issues come up. One, we'll have a couple of change orders, one that you know about, and that's with the Good and Quick Store. We're going to change that driveway so the width is as it is now. And all of that, they will eliminate a street light. So we do have quantities and planned changes for that, so we'll bring that to you at the next meeting. And I believe there will probably a net decrease in contract cost because of that. There's quite a bit of concrete that's going to be taken out of the contract because of that. Then the other is when they first got started with the alley that they've now got rock in, there, it was very, very wet. And there were roof drains that were draining into that excavation, so it was extremely wet. And so all of the muck that was excavated out of that was replaced with rock. So there was some rock that was anticipated, but there, there was additional rock and the contractors agreed to provide that recycled concrete at cost. So I believe it's like $6,000 for the additional rock, so it will provide long-term benefit in that alley. So we'll bring you a change order for that one. Just a couple of other things that we've been working on with Verbio, with the expansion out there. We did receive a drainage plant report for that. We had a number of issues with it. They've redone the drainage report and it's now been approved. So whenever that property gets annexed, it will be ready to accept by council. In regard to that, we, I think one of the issues with the plat was that we need to create a a plat that, or with the annexation, is we need to create a plat that's signed and certified by a licensed land surveyor. So that will take some survey work in order to draft that plat. And when it's done, maybe the, maybe the annexation will proceed. With that, just a couple of other quick notes on the, on the wastewater treatment plant work. The, we're, we're making progress on the, on the trunk line going down S14. The county engineer had indicated in a letter a number of issues that they had with the installation of the pipe on S14. Mark or Mike Roth has drafted a response to that. And I believe tomorrow Mike is meeting with the Board of Supervisors and the county engineer to hopefully get that issue resolved and we can get a permit to construct that sewer through there. Another, another project is the street project and we are, we're going to be wrapping that up pretty shortly and hopefully have a letting in May on that project, so. Lot, lot of stuff going on and I didn't realize, but I think this is my first meeting since January. It just doesn't seem like it's been that long. But it's good to be back and a lot of stuff happening, so if you've got any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
What would our backup plan be if we can't get that permit for the trunk line? What would our backup plan be? For the trunk line? Do we have one?
There really isn't one. There's really no reason to deny it. Okay?
Was the county consulted on that before now?
Yes.
Or is this the first?
Last year, the city obtained a conditional use permit through the Board of Adjustment and Planning and zoning commission. And supervisors were well aware of that. And the, the city, the county engineer was part of that process, meeting with all of the department heads with the county. So yes, it's been, it's been vetted for quite a while. That conditional use permit was accepted and approved. And this is just a utility permit to get the pipe in the ground.
That was after they had us change to an alternate route as well.
Excuse me?
Now is that the conditional use permit, that was permitted after we had an alternate route for.
Yes, yes, there were concerns expressed by one property owner about going through his property with a portion of it. And because of that, it was rerouted to stay in the S14 right-of-way at the request of the property owner and the, and the, and the county.
So they basically approved it and now they've changed their mind on that? Is that what I'm hearing?
The, what was approved was a conditional use permit through the planning and development group of the county. And going through their processes and it was approved by the Board of Adjustment. This is the utility permit to actually get a permit to install the pipe in the S14 right-of-way. The pushback at this point is, is there's some issues that the county engineer has raised. And that's what the meeting is tomorrow to try to resolve those issues. It's a 30-inch pipe. It's not unusual for us to put 30-inch pipes in the ground, but they're concerned about how that might impact the longitudinal drain tile that's in the right-of-way, which is easy enough to address. If we take it out, we'll put it back in a better condition than it is right now. And having a pipe in the ground is certainly not anything unusual for us. We have them all over the city. 30-inch or larger. We have 60, 72-inch storm sewer pipes all over. So.
That's going to be at the regular Board Supervisor meeting tomorrow?
There really, there really aren't a whole lot of other options other than trying to get permanent easements from outside of the right-of-way, which creates a whole nother set of problems.
It'd be helpful if some council members logged into the board meeting tomorrow to listen.
The, well, part of the problem with, with the, with obtaining, obtaining the permanent easements, we either obtain them all by, by agreement with the property owner. If they say no, the city may have to go to connotation to do that. A step we don't want to do. Hopefully they can get it worked out tomorrow. Any other questions?
And one thing, too, with, you mentioned the wet alley. And so I thought it's a great idea to tie those buildings into the storm sewer while they were digging it up. So I don't know whose idea that was, but that'll help a ton with that alley being wet. I was talking about that alley that's, that's wet. And tying those buildings in directly to the storm sewer was a really good idea, so I don't know who thought of that, but that'll help a lot long term.
Be handy if they did.
I think they did. I thought, I thought I saw that they did.
Did those, I don't, I really don't know.
There, there's, I thought that's what they were going to do.
It would be, it would be the thing to do, yes. Absolutely. All right.
Thank you.
Karen?
I have IMFWA conference next week for a couple of days and hopefully the budget amendment will be finished and ready for next meeting, so. Right now, if you have any questions.
Thanks, Karen. Over to Erin.
Nothing for me.
Okay, anything else before we adjourn? I know there's a special meeting, 29. So have that down. You can zoom if you need to. Anything else? Okay, we have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Jason, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
opposed, please say nay. We are adjourned. Thanks, everyone.